Good evening. We'd like to welcome you all to our February 1st, 2018 Town Council meeting. We officially call the meeting to order, and at this time, we'd like to invite some youth in the audience down to the front, and Councilmember Cook will assist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to have Samantha, and Jackson, and Reese lead us in the pledge. And I think Jackson's going to do this for us. So can we all please stand? And Jackson, there's our flag.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for both, all three of you here. I have a gift for all three of For helping us out. This is a pocket U.S. Constitution. So for the two younger siblings, when you get older, you can have fun reading this. And for Samantha, when you come back next time, we'll give you a test. With that, have a round of applause for our friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. At this time, I'd like to invite Rabbi Ash forward to give us our invocation. Did I miss the rabbi? Oh, thank you. Oh. I missed ya. Welcome, and thank you for the wonderful menorah lighting you provided to our community this year. We sure appreciated it.
Perfect. Even better. Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Peterson, Town Council members. I also want to, I guess, give a special shout-out to the Gilbert police officers that are here, police force. Let's see they're here in force, literally, and thank you very much for everything that you do for all of us over here in town. Isaiah 45:18 states, "He is the God, the one who fashioned the earth and its maker." He established it. He did not create it for emptiness; he fashioned it to be inhabited. A vital aspect of God's plan in creation, based on the verse in Isaiah, is for people to live and work together for a civilized society that operates in harmony, where people join together to enact a legal system for the purpose of building an environment where people are free to grow, free to produce, free to pursue better lives for themselves and for others. This is the purpose of government, to build a community where people can thrive as only human beings are capable, so that they are free to serve God to their best ability. Honorable Mayor and council members, it is easy to lose sight of this lofty goal when you are bogged down in deliberations in that which demands your attention. Therefore, we turn to God to bestow blessings on our towns' leaders, to provide them the wisdom to balance the rights of individuals, the community, and businesses, to enact laws and institute policies that will bring God's blessing of peace, goodness, and blessing upon them and upon all the citizens of this great town. May be favorable in God's eyes to bless our mayor and council members, and all the citizens of Gilbert, at all times and at every moment with his peace and blessings. May God bless the United States of America, the state of Arizona, and the town of Gilbert, and let us say amen.
Thank you. That was wonderful. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll-call.
Mayor Jim Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, it's an opportunity for us to do a special recognition, which is, we'll explain the police force in force here tonight, and we appreciate that. I know you've all come to support one of your own, and one that we're certainly proud of. We'll turn to Councilmember Ray. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We want to invite up Lieutenant Joe Kasich, please, and his family who's here. Come on up. And of course, whenever we talk about family of police and fire, we want to invite up the policemen and women who are here as well, who are part of his family. So I think it's a little bit fitting that this Sunday night, a few nights ago, was the annual police gala, where they recognized different police officers for different acts of heroism, and service, and Officer of the Year, and different things. And I was fortunate enough to attend that with my son. But before they did the ceremony, they had some comedians come and do different skits and things. And of course, they brought up Joe here, Lieutenant Kasich. And it was only fitting that it was about superheroes, the entire skit. And so as we look around here, I say thank you, along with the other council members, to each of our superheroes who do so much to protect the town of Gilbert. And Mr. Kasich, I don't know if I call him lieutenant, or Joe, or what the title is now that he's retiring, but 23 years as a police officer here. And we have a certificate of appreciation signed by the mayor. I'll read just a couple of comments from it. "But as the mayor and council of the town of Gilbert, it's our distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Police Lieutenant Joseph Kasich on the occasion of his retirement. Since 1994, serving tirelessly and admirably, Lieutenant Kasich has been a valuable member of the department. It's with gratitude and appreciation that we recognize and commend him for his dedication and longstanding service. On behalf of the Town Council and all the residents of Gilbert, Lieutenant, it's with great sincerity that we convey our appreciation for your outstanding career and for your service to the people of Gilbert, and we wish you the best in your retirement." Let's give a round of applause, please. those who are here that you like, and don't introduce the ones that you don't like. We'll just keep it to immediate family, not the whole police family. We'll be here all night.
Hello. This is my wife, Livy. She's a detective with the Chandler Police Department. This is my mom, Kathy. My nephew, is that right? Nephew, Jaden. My mother-in-law, Carmen, and my father-in-law, Alex, and then the rest of the police department back there. Not the rest of it, some of them.
We know that, I shouldn't say I know, because I don't know. I assume that being a family member of a police officer is probably more difficult than being the actual police officer themselves. So let's give the family a round of applause as well. Thank you, Lieutenant. We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to communications from citizens. Vice Mayor Peterson, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we actually have two. I'd like to ask Christine Akerso to please come down to the podium, and then Joseph Daniel.
Should I go ahead? Okay, okay. Good evening, Mayor Daniels and councilmembers. My name is Christine Akerso, and I've lived in Gilbert for 10 years, and our family has a concern that we want to bring to your attention this evening. We love the focus of family in Gilbert. It's why we moved here, and it's why we stay. A few months back, I was here in these chambers at a planning commission meeting, when there was a use permit being considered for a much-needed behavioral health center in Gilbert. We all know it took this company some time to find the right spot within the medical community in a light industrial area. Well, there was a large group of people that were present pushing back because they didn't know about it, and they had some concerns. Evidently, the town policy for this is to notify adjacent properties within 300 feet of a radius. I know they took that initiative and expanded it, which was even generous for that company. But the concern that we had was that the neighboring businesses and households would be closest to the center didn't even know that they were coming to town. They were here applying for a use permit, and only the people found out about it by word of mouth. If you stand on the property and walk through the large dirt lot, because it's all dirt there, 900 feet, you'll find the doorstep of the medical practice that I manage every day. We didn't get notified or even learn about this until I happened to hear from a friend. So the 300-foot policy in place doesn't seem to encompass the heart of how we do business in Gilbert, which is with our neighbors. Fast forward to last week, when many people in my faith community found out that the town had been actively talking about expanding the Heritage District perimeter to include the property of several family homes and the outreach of the St. Anne's Catholic Church to make a new road there. The town staff, Hyde-paid consultants, town leadership, elected officials, no one ever spoke to the Catholic Church that owns the property at 14 North Cottonwood, or the homeowners in that neighborhood, until last week. It was only when a few of us found out about it that the property owners started becoming aware of this situation. The first public stakeholder meeting was November 30. No one bothered to invite, or even speak, to the biggest stakeholders, which are the owners of those properties. Putting those two examples together, our biggest concern is that our policies, algorithms, templates for invitations, the very way we approach business in town, is missing something. It's missing us. I encourage everyone at the town, both elected officials, staff, everyone, to readjust the lens that you look through when you govern and lead. The lens should be about families of Gilbert and the existing businesses here. It's common sense, and it's something that our $400,000 out-of-state paid consultant has missed on many occasions. What else is being missed? Who else is out there? Again, I encourage you to readjust your lens and filter everything through the bedrock of our community, which is Gilbert families. Thank you for your time, and I'm grateful for your service.
Thank you, Christine.
Joseph Daniel, please come to the podium. Just introduce yourself, and let us know if you are a resident of Gilbert, please.
Yes, I'm staying with my family currently on Gibson, pretty close to here. We have two concerns here for you guys this evening. It's an honor to be here and speak to you. The first tonight is the Gilbert City water. Now, Mike Adams is the top expert of health in our nation from NaturalNews.com. He conducted a 100-sample test from cities all across this nation. The number-one item found in Maricopa County water, chromium-6, amongst many other chemicals in our water here. So we present to you a concern. As you all and I shower in this water, many people don't even know, in our city, what they're drinking and how toxic it really is. We need a new system in place. The next six months, next year, put the plans together. We need a new water system here that filters everything out. Should be pure drinking water for everybody to enjoy. Now, the second thing tonight, we want to show you, this is a coustometer that measures the amount of electromagnetic frequency hitting all of the Gilbert residents every day. Right now, we're at about 25 microwatts per square meter because of the Wi-Fi in this building. But the main concern is the cell phone towers by the Crown Castle Corporation. They're the biggest corporation in the United States, 40,000 cellphone towers. They're amassing nationwide. Almost every block in this town of Gilbert, we have schools, we have the plaza up there with a huge cellphone tower radiating at 25,000 microwatts per square meter of non-ionized radiation into everybody. Depression, cancer, tumors, you name it, health effects are just coming on the population like no tomorrow. Study after study, we have online a simple Google search of effects of EMF on the body. You'll see countless studies. The main one I'll present to you tonight is the BioInitiative Report of 2012. That included 10 nations studying the effects of EMF on the human. At 3 microwatts per square meter, the bodies, at the DNA cellular level, start changing, and cancer begins happening in the body at 3 microwatts per square meter, according to the BioInitiative Report 2012, on a simple Google search that you can find. Three. So if you go to a tower, we have hundreds of thousands of people driving by these towers every day, all over Gilbert, all over Phoenix. And we're getting microwaved every day, nonstop. It's such an onslaught, above football stadiums, above elementary schools. We have little kids being microwaved by a cellphone tower 100 yards from their playground, every single day. We must do something. We're calling you to action, to do something for us. Every day, we're getting microwaved. Every day, we're showering in this water.
Thank you, Joseph. We appreciate you being here today. I do see that the red light has come on. So thank you for participating in our meeting today. We appreciate it. At this time, we will move to the consent calendar. And today is a historic day in Gilbert, and we're going to move 20A to the front part of our meeting today, and ask our town attorney to give us some background information, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council members, we've kind of got a unique item here. I don't think it's one that's been before the council before, to my knowledge, and speaking with colleagues in probably any other city in a long time, at least. The situation is we had offered, the town had offered some parcels for bid on January 4, and per state statute, we had to post it public notice, allow the offering to happen. It happened at closed on January 30. At 3:00 p.m., we had received some sealed bids. And in one parcel in particular, we received two bids. When we opened the sealed bids, they happened to be for this exact same amount. And so because we have two bids for the same amount for the same parcel, our town code says that the winner of the invitation for bid, or the party that has the right to purchase the bid, or purchase the parcel, it shall be selected by the council by lot, and that's why we're here today. We've spoken with both of the bidders, David Liu, representing the Liu Living Trust, and Andy Goforth, representing the Verdi Building Corporation. We've agreed on the rules. We're going to do a coin toss, determine who is the successful bidder for this invitation for bid, and then at the next council meeting, we'll present the purchase contract for the parcel. So the winning bid, it's actually parcel number 304-53-131C, and both bid amounts were $500, $1,000. So the coin toss will be overseen by our presiding judge, John Hudson. So if you can come up, Judge Hudson, and...
So this may never happen again in the town of Gilbert. We're not sure it's actually ever happened up until this point, as far as we could tell. And this may never happen again. So we appreciate the parties participating, and actually being pretty good sports about the whole thing. We realize that this isn't a normal daily occurrence in the town of Gilbert. So thank you for providing that background information. And Judge Hudson, I think at this point, it's all up to you. No pressure.
Mr. Goforth, Mr. Liu, why don't you just come forward? By discussions prior to the council meeting, it was determined that we would flip the coin first, determine who gets to have heads and who gets to have tails. On this coin, the town of Gilbert coin, heads is the Gilbert Water Tower, the iconic Gilbert Water Tower. Tails is the We the People, the Constitution. Now, in the preliminary flip, Mr. Goforth is heads, and Mr. Liu is tails. So, gentlemen, are you ready?
Right.
If it lands on heads, Mr. Goforth will be heads. If it lands on tails, Mr. Liu will be heads, by a previous agreement. This has all been ironed out and approved by the town attorney.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, are you ready?
Dumb action.
And by agreement, we're going to let it hit the ground. It is heads.
I am heads. I'm tails. All right. Good luck. Good luck.
So, by prior agreement, heads is Mr. Goforth, tails is Mr. Liu. Whichever way lands up on top, that gentleman is the winner. The person who does not prevail in this complicated game will receive the coin as a consolation.
Woo-hoo! Wow, thank you.
You don't get the coin.
Thank you again to both of you. Thank you, Judge Hudson, for assisting us. We actually decided that because we were already going to have Judge Hudson here ready to flip coins, we do one other thing. So you guys are both welcome to go sit. This one.
This one, I was requested to do, so I'm happy to play the role. In honor of the, there's a game on Sunday. I've been requested to flip a coin, for those of you who partake in games of chance, to see perhaps what team we can think may prevail on Sunday. So in regards to that, I hope you're New England fans. It was the Patriots.
You've made our vice-
This is not official. Thank you.
You've made our vice mayor very happy. Thank you, Judge Hudson.
Mayor, I think we ought to do this for zoning cases, and I think Sean Lake should be the first one.
You know, we have to have a little sense of humor up here every now and again. So thank you very much, and thank you to everybody who participated. Judge Hudson, we're grateful for you. That moves us to the rest of the business of our agenda today, and I look to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lengthy list here. Item number five has been requested to be pulled by Councilmember Peterson. Item number seven, excuse me, six and seven have been removed from the agenda this evening. Item number 16 has a revised ordinance, and number 14- Consent. Oh, sorry, that one's on the other. Sorry, it's on my list here. 14 has a change in minutes that were posted ahead of the meeting for everybody to view, and numbers. In addition, for the administrative items, we have number 19, that will be a motion by Councilmember Scott Anderson, and number 20, that will be a motion by Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Just confirming one piece of that, if you will, Vice Mayor, is the minutes. It looks like there was an additional change that wasn't posted ahead of time.
There was an additional change made around 5:00.
Okay.
5:00. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had additional change. And it is on the dais.
So, Mayor, I will attempt to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening. Items number 2, 3, A, B, and C, number 4, number 8, number 9, number 10, number 11, number 12, number 13, number 14, with the additions made previously and today at 5:00 p.m. And number 19, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Beau Bigelow to be a member of the Redevelopment Commission to complete the remainder of a term beginning February 1, 2018, and ending October 31, 2018.
And then, Councilmember Peterson?
I move to appoint Jennifer Jones as one regular member to the Industrial Development Authority to complete the remainder of a term beginning February 1, 2018, and ending March 12, 2023.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I'm going to add one more thing. I do believe that for Agenda Item 20A, we actually need to accept the bid as well. Looks like that's the motion that's in front of us on 20A, so a motion to accept-
That's correct, Mayor.
-the successful bidder. So we can do that separately as well.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Please vote on 20A.
Should we name the party?
For the record.
The party is Verdi Building Corporation.
Thank you. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well, and I believe that moves us now to Agenda Item 5.
Mayor, this is not news. I am opposed to funding repair and replacement projects with debt, and that's what this is. In my mind, that flies in the face of our policy to not use one-time revenue for ongoing expenses. So that's the only reason I pulled it. Mayor is to vote on us separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Agenda Item 5?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 4-3 vote. Thank you. And I believe that completes the consent agenda for this evening. That moves us to our public hearing items. Items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Vice Mayor, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have one request to speak on item number 15, and it is Father Michael, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce. Please come down to the podium, introduce yourself, and let us know if you are-
Just one second. Yeah, I've got to open the public hearing first on those items. So, no request to speak on, let's see, 16 and 17, and I have one request on 18. So, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 16 and 17, close the public hearing on 16 and 17, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 16 as revised, and was posted before the meeting, and Item 17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I would like to request that we continue Agenda Item 18, and move that to, let's see, our March 8 meeting?
Second.
All right. I don't think we need to open the public hearing on that item if we continue it. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Chris. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I usually don't make the motion. That was awkward for me. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Almost fell over.
And that brings us back to Agenda Item 15, where I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 15, and we'd love to briefly hear a presentation from staff, and then we'd like to invite the public to speak, if that's okay, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Just a little background information will be helpful.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, good evening. Council, good evening. I'll do the presentation tonight for the, these two applications. So in front of you, you have a perspective map that shows you the red box, which is the location of the Lacy Track property. It's 1.36 acres of land. I did highlight the church that is to the north of the property, and I did put an arrow on some concerned citizens that live just to the southwest of the property. I wanted to briefly mention the Heritage District area, Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District. This was adopted by Resolution 3202 back in 2013. So keep in mind, what is referenced here is a little dated, but this is one of the tools that is talked about in the report in regards to protecting this area from uses that may not be desirable. So the request tonight is for the general plan amendment, minor general plan amendment, is to change residential 5-8 dwelling units per acre to Village of Center, VC. And to the north, we have existing single-family six designations to the north and to the west, and then we have the commercial VC to the, the east and to the south. The request for the zoning is, for the zoning request tonight, is to change the existing zoning, which is residential, from single-family six to the HVC, commercial zoning. And once again, we have residential to the north and to the west. We also have commercial heritage Village Center to the south and to the east. The property is fronted by Washington Avenue, and you do have Gilbert Road on the east side. Elliott Road is, is also to the south. You just can't see it on the map. My apologies. Now, this is to kind of highlight the area that we're talking about tonight, the site, the Lacy Track site. It's in red, but right to the south is also a property that's owned by the town. This whole, the applications, both these applications, the intent is to eventually be able to combine both pieces of property, have a larger site for potential uses. But I want to stress that we haven't decided what the uses are. I will say at the public hearings and also at the neighborhood meetings, there wasn't concern from roughly about 10, 10 residents that were there, that they had some issues with the type of uses that may, that may end up here. The one that they had the most concern with was the possible nightclub bar. Staff talked about three tools that are in place that would protect the residents from uses that weren't desirable. And as we mentioned earlier, it was the Heritage District map that we talked about that gives the council the ability to make a recommendation for any type of liquor application that would come forward before it goes to the state. The other one being the good neighbor policy, which works with different commercial vendors to communicate and to have open communications before the businesses go into play. And the last one would be the public hearings, where the people that live in around these areas can come and make comments. One of the tools that wasn't mentioned is also a development agreement. That could be put in place to protect the people that are living around this area. They are, the people that live around the area are concerned that if a bar-type nightclub use was to go into place, it would be, it would disrupt their lives, it would, it would cause a lot of traffic issues, and so on. It's a valid concern, but staff has spoken to the neighbors about it in detail. So this has gone to the Redevelopment Commission. They made a favorable, favorable recommendation to council, or I should say to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning Commission also had the opportunity to view and make a decision on the case back in January, and they also made a recommendation to council to move it forward. And tonight, staff is making the same recommendation for approval on both these applications. If you have any questions or comments, or need more details on the economic development portion of this, Amanda Elliott is here tonight. She, her, me or her can answer more questions if you have any.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you like to call our public comment?
Mayor, yes, thank you. I'd like to call Father Michael down to the podium to speak, please. Father, if you could just introduce yourself for the record and let us know that you're a resident of Gilbert.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, it's a privilege to speak with you and all the public here this evening. I'm Father Michael Bezroucka. Complicated pronunciation. And yes, I am pastor of St. Thomas the Apostle Byzantine Catholic Church, which is just, just to the north there, as you saw that site. I also live about three minutes west, to the west of the church, and am a Gilbert resident there as well. I just wanted to, to mention that lately I've been, I've been really, I've been, I've come to these last three meetings, the redevelopment, the planning commission, and now tonight. And I've also been involved in the whole, the whole redevelopment master plan process from which Crandola Rembula, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, has been coming and involving the public in this process and, and holding stakeholder meetings. It's been good to be part of that process. And the most recent meeting I was able to attend was yesterday morning, and I liked a lot of the, the proposals that they were, the ideas that they were coming up with at the moment, the north anchor, the, the middle area and the downtown part of the Heritage Village Center, and then the south anchor. One of the things that they proposed was that this very site would be a parking garage, essentially. And then the site directly below it, between Washington and Elliott, would be a, I think it was some sort of grocery store retail kind of establishment. And it sounds like, I wasn't able to go to the public workshop the night before, but it sounds like the feedback that they got was that they wanted, something was more of a locally-owned, regional grocery store rather than a, than a CVS pharmacy kind of thing. I really like the idea of having a parking lot in this very site that's being discussed right now. I think that with the businesses directly to the west, sorry, directly to the east, right on Gilbert Road, there are some businesses right there, and they don't have a lot of parking. But even if, if they should develop into other buildings, which would require more parking, I think that Crandola Rembula is having some good foresight in, in seeing the needs there. Certainly, as our church grows, which I hope it does, more and more, we will end up having, we could benefit from the parking on Sunday morning. But I think especially with, on the south side, as that grows, that's going to need more and more parking. And as there have been parking garages to the north of the railroad tracks, I think it's time to start thinking about the south of the railroad tracks as well, and the Heritage Village Center. I also think it's important to consider those development agreements to limit any possibility of nightclub-bar kind of uses. But I think that as long as that's a parking lot, we probably shouldn't have to worry about that. But I like, I like the direction things are going with the proposals from Crandola Rembula, so I just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Thank you, Father, for being here. We very much appreciate your input and your participation in the process. We know your time is definitely limited, so thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council on this item? Scott? Or Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah. I've had the, the privilege of attending the same meetings Father Michael's been in, and I've been impressed with the representation of neighbors in that area. One thing that I would like to, while I am supportive of the zoning change, I think we need to be aware also, and we're in a good position as an owner, to be able to follow the concerns of the neighbors in that area, and their specific concerns that I heard had to do with traffic in that area. So I think that whatever happens on that site, we should be very much aware of the need for an analysis of traffic, including pedestrian, bicycle, parking. There were issues expressed about parking in the area. Those are issues that need to be addressed as development occurs on that site, and I just wanted to make sure we were aware of that.
This has already been sort of alluded to, but the fact that this is owned by the public, this property, the, the public will continue to have a say and a voice in what happens with it. So in some cases, when it's a used-by-right, it's a used-by-right, and there's really nothing we can do about it. In this case, it's, it is publicly owned, so the good neighbor principles, we have lots of opportunities to make sure those are applied here.
Mayor, thank you. You know, what's nice about the process is that it allows us to dream and have vision of what that could look like. And, you know, the concept of now providing the ability maybe to have a grocery store for a lot of the neighbors that are there, and then they can walk to the grocery store, I think it's a great idea. And of course, if the grocery store, you know, does happen, again, we don't know if that's the case, you know, having that additional parking there for, you know, that Village Center would be, you know, a wonderful addition. I know that our friends to the south, relating to the museum, they would appreciate that as well. And then whatever in the future that we decide to do in the southeast corner, again, I think the parking kind of concept is a great idea, as well as the potential of a grocery store.
Thank you. We appreciate all the comments from council and from public and staff. I'd just like to add one more comment, and that is that the quantity of emails that I've personally received this in the last week about the Heritage District specifically have brought a lot of things, I guess, to the surface, if you will. I just want to caution everyone against any misinformation that might be swirling out there. It's easy, when you're going through, in many ways, a charrette process, to just get ideas out on the table and to understand that there is going to be a final document at some point, but that this is going to be very much vetted, and that there's still a lot of processes that need to take place. So as we move forward with this, there's going to be many opportunities for public input, public comment. We're in no way signing a document, then, you know, completing this process today. This is an ongoing and a fluid process, so we want to continue to hear from the public. And if you hear something out there, it may have been an idea floated by an individual, but not necessarily adopted into the actual redevelopment plan. And so let's just keep this in mind as we continue to have these discussions. It's an exciting time for us as a community, and there's a lot of opportunity for us, but we want to make sure that we're following a process and making sure that the right information and correct and true information is what's being continually disseminated. So if there's any questions or concerns, please reach out to your town council, please reach out to Redevelopment Commission, please reach out to town staff who are leading this process, and we can help circulate the correct information. And want to make sure that's very clear. So I hope it's okay that I took a moment to do that, and I, this time, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 15 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. That does complete our public hearing items today and moves us to administrative items. Board and Commission Committee reports from our council liaisons. Does anyone wish to report out? Seeing none, we will move to our report from our acting town manager, Leah Hubbard Reinhimer. Leah, will you say something that might get Patrick in trouble? That'd be great, if you could help with that.
Mayor, that would be my pleasure. Mayor and council, just a few things to share with you and with the community. We had a retirement today from Kim Rowley in our Public Works Department. He is retiring from the Streets Maintenance Division, where he helped lead our crack-seal repair. So we often take for granted the conditions that our roads are in, and Kim is someone who's been with the town for 15 years. He has crack sealed approximately 22,500,000 square yards of Gilbert roads during his tenure with us. So a lot of service and a lot of hard work, so we thank him. We also thank Lieutenant Kasich for his 23 years plus of service to Gilbert. And speaking of the Gilbert Police Department, they will be recruiting this weekend at the Gilbert Farmer's Market, so we hope everyone will stop by to visit with them. And just wanted to share a quick, good story with you with our Gilbert Fire Department. Just this week, we had a fire on the border of Gilbert and Chandler, and Fire Engines 257 and 254 responded to that. Our Engine 257 was first on the scene, and they were able to take command, pull a line into the interior for search and rescue, as well as fire control, and safely recover a two-year-old from the home and return her to her family unharmed. So it was a great story to share with you and with the community. And as Vice Mayor Peterson knows, we had the 2018 Regional Unity Walk this past Saturday, so Gilbert was proud to participate in that, along with Chief Mike Solberg from our Gilbert PD, and Melanie Dykstra, and other town members. So thankful to participate in that with Mesa Chandler and Tempe and Scottsdale. And then finally, we just want to do a quick recap on the mayor's digital state of the town. This took place just last Tuesday. It was a sold-out event with over 400 RSVPs. And since last Tuesday, I think we've had over, almost 19,000 views through social media. So that is, or the equivalent of 46, nearly 47 theaters full of audience members watching that. So we hope the community will continue to share that far and wide, but it was a great success. And we encourage everyone to visit gilbertaz.gov and click on that link if they haven't had a chance to watch it yet.
I keep hoping that Councilmember Peterson will grace us with another cartwheel.
I'll just go try and pull on a root I can't pull out.
We enjoyed that very much. Thank you. Report from the council in current events. Seeing none, I will do a quick report. I wanted to recognize Dana Birchman, our Chief Digital Officer. She was, her team was recognized by Smart Cities Dive. It's a group that's looking very closely at the smart city initiatives that are going on in the 2017. They will receive a 2017 Dive Award. This is the quote that I loved. It says, "Gilbert is a city that's meeting its residents where they are online. Gilbert's Office of Digital Government is a model department that other cities can and should look to when developing engagement strategies." So I thought that was a great quote about one of Gilbert's own. And I also want to do another quick thank you and a recognition for the 3-1-1 system that's been implemented. Every single town department is touching this 3-1-1 system, and it's really a great success for our community. And I just want to encourage our residents to download the Gilbert 3-1-1 app and to report anything that they see needing repair, a street light out, you know, a crack in the sidewalk that's causing some concern, you know, if you see any bulk trash that was left in a, in a lot or something to that effect. We've had citizens report things, you know, issues in our parks or any other landscape maintenance issue, and it's being quickly and efficiently resolved. And it allows us to track the concern, and that is a huge part of this effort. So it allows us as a council to track it, but it allows staff to track it and the individual who's reported it. So great success. Thank you to every single town team who's making that work for the community. So with that, I think that is all of the announcements that we have today. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.